Didn't come anywhere?
No. Had issues.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Of course, he's working at Riverhead also?
I don't know what he does. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of the town of Smithtown. Before we proceed with this evening's agenda, I ask that you all rise and please join us in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The chair recognizes Plan Matthew Collado for the reading of items that are not ready to be acted upon this evening, and the department recommends for recessing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04 storybook homes in Nescotet; number 2, 2012-02 Carlson Associates Kings Park; number 3, 2010-06 KVC Holdings; under waiver requests, number 4, number 773 Scholar States Comac; 5, number 1135 To Ami Pla Saint James; number 6, 911A Glenhill Northern. And that concludes that.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on any of the items recommended that we recess this evening? There being none, do I have a motion?
Motion to recess items 1 through 6 as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The items are recessed. First item on the agenda to be heard is a waiver request for Maria Homestead, Smithtown.
My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. You'll recall, either the last meeting or the meeting before, the board was going to take a look at the trees that the Planning Department recommended be planted. We thought we showed you that there were hedges quite high. I think the hedges are at least 10 to 12 feet. So, whatever the board's decision is, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it.
I recall back in October of 2014, when we voted on this, one of the conditions was that street trees be planted. The applicant, your client, agreed to this. Now, what has changed since you agreed, or the applicant has agreed to do this in 2014 versus the situation today?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure as to whether he understood what he was agreeing to.
Well, that's what he sent you for.
I know. And I don't know if I advised him or not with respect to whether the trees were supposed to be planted or not, or whether the hedges would take the place of the trees. Notwithstanding that, the common sense would dictate, do we put in trees behind hedges which nobody can see? That's the board's decision. And as I said, it's not worth making more of an argument about it at this point.
Okay. I know in the past you've faulted some members of the board for not following the Planning Department's advice, so I'm a little bit torn as to whether or not we should go, you or the department's recommendation. But I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments, and we could go from there.
That's fine.
Any questions, comments on this issue? Nope.
I just have a comment, sort of, that there are no sidewalks on, I was there a couple of times, and I actually walked that whole side of the street. There aren't any sidewalks on that side, on the north side of 25A. And I was just wondering, the comment from the Planning Department that it does not provide shade for passersby, I was wondering if there was any place for passersby to walk safely on that side or on that lot. That's all, just commenting on that. And if that was the reason, then I wouldn't object to no trees, but I'm sure, I don't know if the house was sold or not. I'm sure that's going to be landscaped anyway.
Well, these are three existing homes or three structures, and I think all we did with the subdivision was put in two property lines and dividing it into
Right.
three separate parcels.
So it's not a brand-new subdivision. It's an old, 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 been around probably for 50 years.
That's correct. But, you know, I wonder why the Planning Department requested this happen, and also why your client agreed to it. So, we're a little bit in between, it twixts in between, at least, at least I am.
That's what, Chairman?
I guess so. Any other comments, questions?
I guess there must be a reason why the Planning Board blown away, so.
Okay. So we have the resolution before us. Do you want to make a motion on that?
Thought we'd make a motion that we...
The resolution says that they deny the waiver.
I can make a resolution.
Want a public hearing first?
Yes, we closed the public hearing. That sounds like a good idea. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing's closed on the resolution itself. Does, do we have a motion?
We have some big emotion that we abide by the Planning Department's decision. App of Maria Homestead, 10-9, deny application.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose. I would vote to allow them to waive the trees based upon the layout of the land with the hedges there. I think that provides sufficient greenage in the area, and I think common sense is an issue here, so I would just vote to allow them to waive the planning of the trees.
And I'd like to vote the same way, that I would like to vote nay, that I feel that they don't need, we can waive the trees.
Okay. On the resolution then, we have three votes in the affirmative, two in the negative. The resolution is adopted. The next item
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Laura Park in Nescotet. Is the applicant or his representative present?
Here he is. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Detective Posteen.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Zolo. I'm here tonight on behalf of John Barnett. We had had this case on, on different occasions, and I had spoken to Mr. Barnett about trying to, with not pursuing with the curb cut application for this waiver. And Mr. Barnett is here this evening, and having had a chance to discuss this with him, he would like to proceed with the application for the granting of the curb cut and the waiver of the subdivision requirement. He, um, he did everything right. He made application for a curb cut permit. It was granted. And I refer this board to the August 11, 2017 Planning Advisory Report, which was read into the record. I would ask that everything that was read into record be incorporated into the record as part of the hearing. And I'm speaking to Mr. Barnett, and you all know his house fronts on Southern Boulevard. The curb cut that he applied for and was granted was done to the suggestion of a Highway Department employee, and he expended a significant amount of money to put the curb cut in. He did everything right. And it just makes sense to have access from that parcel, from his house, into the, into the court, Laura Court. It's him, it's John Barnett, his wife, and there's only, there's not a lot of traffic coming out of that house. And if you've ever been on Southern Boulevard, where the Great Hall School is, and watched the buses come in and out, you realize, we've heard, we've heard comments from the neighbors about their concern about safety from him going onto the court, but no one's discussed his safety from going onto Southern Boulevard from his driveway. In this instance, it makes sense. When I filed this application, I was of the opinion that these covenants that were imposed requiring the consent of the surrounding neighbors were not enforceable. Mrs. Sabatino and I respectfully disagree on that point. I've explained to my client that it would be nice to have the consent of the neighbors, and we're not going to, we're not going to get that, it seems. So, we'll probably have to pursue an Article 78 proceeding. This board sees fit not to grant the waiver. And the language that's in the covenant always, it's, I believe, allows this board to delegate its decision-making responsibility to surrounding neighbors without any standards, without any guidance, and just as a matter of, I guess, public safety for Mr. Barnett, who didn't own the house when the house was, when this condition was imposed, and who knows why the condition was imposed, but it makes sense for the safety of his, himself and his family to have access into the court. Paggard number four of the covenant says that within covenants and restrictions may be amended, annulled, altered, or repealed at any time upon consent of the then owners of the premises and the Planning Board of the town of Smithtown after public hearing. I think that covenant provision is beyond the law, ultra virus, and I believe it's forcing this board to give up your decision-making ability and abrogating your responsibilities as Planning Board members. So, I don't want to go beat this to death. This is the map of Laura Court. My clients own the property, and these conditions, I think, should be waived by the board. And as the board again recognized, the recommendations from the representative, from the Planning Department was to grant the relief requested, and I'm going to ask that you accept and adopt the resolution that was put forward, that was submitted in the August 11, 2017 memo, and the resolution that was suggested that be adopted to grant the relief requested. And I thank you for your time.
Any questions from any members of the board?
No questions, but I have a comment or two. Well, Mr. Zolo, you definitely, I mean, you raised, there's obviously a legal issue presented here regarding the covenants and whether or not they are enforceable as an improper delegation of governmental function to private citizens. However, the problem that we have here is I have no memo on this. I don't know if any of our board members have a memo. I have absolutely no information in front of me at all
Really?
on this application. So, I'm going to tell, I'm not
Well, we, yeah, we, I didn't attach the memo to your packet, but the August 11 memo, our recommendation was to recess the public hearing to provide the applicant adequate time to discuss the request with the owners of the other four lots in the subdivision. So that's, that was our recommendation.
Right.
Well, the usual procedure would have a new memo that might, would talk about that and what's happened since then. So I'm going to say with nothing in front of me, I'm going to abstain on this application. If there's a vote
Well, may I make, I might, maybe I make a suggestion if that's, I thought you all had the August 11, 2017 memo.
I have nothing.
I have nothing either.
And, because I received it from Planning, and the memo was read into the record on the first, the first time hearing was held. And
Technically, they have it somewhere, just not right here, but, like we said, we didn't give a recommendation, I recommend, we didn't give a recommended resolution. We gave a recommendation to recess the public hearing.
Do we have no, we have, normally what happens if it's an older memo with the whole details of the application were read into the record, we would have a new memo for today that would reflect that, and it would also, there'd be a proposed resolution that would have been drafted, whether it was granting or denying. We'd have none of that. So I'm going to say, I'm going to abstain on this if there's a vote on it. That's all.
It might be appropriate then to table this till the December 15 meeting. I know prior to this, you had requested or asked for adjournments
Yes.
because you were trying to reach a consensus
Correct.
with the neighbors.
Correct.
So at that point, you did recognize that portion of the covenant or contract that was previously issued. So, I would like to find out if any of the neighbors, you know, what their opinion is. I think, didn't they also retain their own counsel?
Mr. Tramarko is our attorney, and as you may recall, the last time we had the hearing, they all spoke, because we were postponing the hearing, but today, they all spoke.
Yes, they all did.
Right.
And you were trying to, you know, get them to agree to some type of compromise here, and now you're saying that that's not necessary. So I'm a little bit also
Okay, well
Well, I think, I think the chairman's suggestion is a good one.
I think that's a reasonable suggestion.
Because maybe we can have a new memo, whatever the meeting is, it's December, in December, December 13th, with an update from what's happened from August 11th to now, and then we can vote on it then.
Okay. And with the board's permission, perhaps I can submit a legal memo to Mr. Sabatino that would outline the reasons why I think the board
Please do.
should grant those.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I'll have that to you before the next hearing date. I'll give it to you on the Monday before, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Paul? That's good.
And they, they will, and send it also to Planning, so they can forward it to the members here.
And I understand, and I appreciate the board understanding, our patience. I did have conversations with Mr. Barnett, and you're correct, at some point, we had a conversation that we thought we'd be able to resolve this aspect with respect to the curb cut. And Mr. Barnett, after soul-searching and figuring out how much he put into this, would like to convince this board that the right thing to do is to waive that covenant so he can keep the curb cut. So, the next date will be December
December 15th.
Well, I think also, perhaps, while we're here
I'd like to hear from the, I'd like to hear from the deputy.
Well, with respect to the legal issue, perhaps
Or the illegal representative.
There can be a, some kind of memorandum from our council as to the enforceability of those covenants, because that, obviously, it's a, that's an issue.
That's the whole issue.
Well, that's one of, that's the legal part of it.
Were those covenants known at the time of closing?
I didn't represent them at closing, so, were the covenants? I don't know the answer.
Well, if they were filed, there'd have to be a record, so if somebody did a title search, it would come up.
But, interesting thing, they might have been known when they purchased it, but the town didn't know on the curb cut permit, so these things do happen. So, I don't think anyone would have thought that we'd be here before the board with, on this issue, and that there would be so much objection to something like this being granted.
Okay.
I'd also like to know, is it possible to hear from any of the neighbors?
Well, Mr. Tramarko, are you still representing the neighbors, or?
Can, from their standpoint, can you say something on their behalf?
Do you want to?
That's what I just said, do you want to?
Maybe we save it for December.
Since you're going to put over the case anyway, I'll be brief. I know these people don't want to listen to me or to John Zolo tonight. But, the whole nexus, the whole crux of this, of John Zolo's argument is, the covenants are unconstitutional. You got to get past that before you do anything. If they're constitutional, then I don't think the board even has a choice. But, having said that, one of my clients, Jim Minet, would like to just submit copies of documents that he collected and put together for the board's edification. We don't have to read anything in the record tonight, if that's okay with the chairman.
That's fine.
I really didn't expect this
Just stay your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, Jim Minet, 21 Laura Court.
Spell your last name for the
M-I-N-E-T, Nescotet, New York.
Thank you.
Didn't really expect this to go this way today. I believe one of your representatives was out to the area to see the property. That individual probably has expressed to you the validity of some of the neighbors' concerns to disallow this, these variances. But to the attorney's, my attorney's point about the constitutionality of the covenants and restrictions, it's town's own position from the legal department that they are constitutional and they stand. So, what I've done really, and again, I wish no distress to Mr. Barnett in any way, any shape, any form, but the fact of the matter is, we have to think about our own rights as well. So I have a letter here I'd like to submit to the board with documentation, and the letter basically is a call to action. It asks that this matter be resolved quickly. This has been going on for a year and a half now without resolution or enforcement to the regulations, to the covenant restrictions. It also provides standing for the covenants and restrictions. We've consulted several attorneys, including our own. We have, I've even offered up an attachment of a precedent of a New York State case that substantiates the standing of these covenants and restrictions, so I have hard copy of that here for you to review. I also have a comment from another attorney in this letter, which I won't read to you, but I'll submit, that talks in great length about the liability the town might incur if it does not enforce the covenants and restrictions regard to any harm that may come to any child on the street because of the additional traffic, vehicular traffic on the cul-de-sac because of the driveway, et cetera. And then most importantly, and the last thing I'll tell you before submitting this information, is I want to make the point that a lot of this is self-inflicted by Mr. Barnett, or perhaps by his contractors. Maybe he had nothing to do with it. I don't know. And I really searched my email data at the time, going back a year and a half, to try to find some case to make, and what I found was interesting because, and what I'll tell you really quick, on July 27, I wrote to William White of the Building Department and said that, it's come to my attention that earlier today, the homeowner at 148 Southern Boulevard has begun constructing a curb, a driveway. He was cutting the curb on the 27th. That's the date on my email. However, the letter from, the subsequent letter that came down from Robert Murphy, from the Highway Department, to Mr. Barnett stating that the curb cut was to be disallowed and the property was supposed to be put back to its original condition, states, "On July 28, the Highway Department issued a curb cut permit," and it offers the number for the curb cut permit, which clearly indicates that the date the curb was being cut, there was no permit. There was no permit. Yet you're hearing from the attorney, Mr. Barnett's attorney, that he did everything right, followed the rules, followed, you know, all the guidelines. At the time, the contractor was cutting the curb, there was no permit. When, and what makes it worse is that in the letter from, to Mr. Barnett, he says, and I quote, "As I explained when we met on August 2nd," and then he goes on to say that the curb cut should be allowed. They had a communication. So Mr. Barnett and his contractors, I assume, would clearly know, as of August 2, that there was to be no curb cut. Yet, I have an email dated August 16 to Mr. Murphy. Your urgent attention is required." This is from me. "This is quite astounding. The 148 Southern Boulevard owner is now laying brick over the concrete portion of the driveway he constructed. You asked me to notify you immediately if any further construction was taking place." So, there's clearly a pattern here of disregard for not only the permit requirements of the town, but the general neighborhood, the neighbors that are affected by all this. So, I really am not trying to cause Mr. Barnett any distress, I'm simply trying to protect my own interests here. So I have the letter I'm going to submit to you, which is basically a call to action, provide some backup in terms of the legitimacy of the covenants and restrictions, so you don't have to just go by your own attorney, the town attorney, saying that the covenant and restrictions stand, but you have other attorneys and other precedents to refer to. In addition to that, I feel that the Article 78 was mentioned earlier from Mr. Zolo, that that would be his natural, the natural outcome if he couldn't get the board to go along with these variation requests. But I think that the burden should be on Mr. Barnett. I mean, he's the one who made these changes without permit. He's the one who was instructed by the town to restore the property to its original condition. So if there is anything to go further past the board saying, no, these variances requests, variance requests are denied because the law is clear, and it's only going to result in an Article 78, why should the burden be upon us, the homeowners, who are victim to all this in the subdivision, rather than the person that caused the problem in the first place? And again, I'm not saying Mr. Barnett had any malice or intention. I wish him well. I have no bad feelings for him personally, but it just seems like it's turned upside down. So I've got, I've only got three copies of the document. I'll submit it to you guys. You can copy it amongst yourselves and do whatever you have to, and I really, actually, you can have my copy, it's a fourth copy. I really
Probably keep your own copy. We can make copies
Okay. I really would ask that you do the right thing, and please bring this thing to closure. It's been a year and a half. We, oh, one last point. The, the adjournments from the prior meetings were for the purpose of creating either resolution or negotiation with the homeowners. There's been no negotiation. There's been no resolution. We have, in fact, been the ones to offer a compromise to Mr. Barnett and his attorney. We said, "Look, if you want to keep the fence where it is, and it's not supposed to be there, we would go along with it, as long as you put up a privacy barrier so that we don't look into your backyard, but the curb cut has to go." That was our compromise. It was, it was turned down. I was informed today that, and I was under the impression coming in here, that they had finally agreed to those terms and that they would allow the, let the fence to stay if they removed the driveway. And then tonight, I guess, at the last 11th hour, they decided against doing that. But we were the ones to propose the compromise, so I don't see what all the adjournments have done to move this thing along. So that's why I'm calling for immediate action.
All right. Please forward copy to Planning staff, who will return, copy our counsel and each of the members on the board. I would like to have this matter, this issue resolved at our December meeting. I think it has gone on long enough, and I think both sides would like to see this issue resolved. As we are about to table the resolution, recess the hearing, I don't know if it would be appropriate due to the number of persons present, if there is anyone who wants to be heard on this, I would ask that you speak briefly, and we will continue this meeting at Town Hall on December 13.
It's not going to be resolved today.
Okay. Please go forward, state your name, spell your last name for the record.
My name is Colleen Forbes. I live at 5 Laura Court in Nescotet. My big concern in regards to this whole driveway cut is, is a built-in pool in this backyard. Every time that gate is opened, there's access to the pool. The fence doesn't go all the way down, so we have issues of a built-in pool being exposed. You know, it's not a self-closing gate. You know, when the cars are moving, the child could go in and easily, you know, have an issue and fall into this pool. You know, so, and if you're making a frontage, you have a built-in pool on your front property. My question.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard briefly on this matter? There being none, do I have a motion to recess the public hearing until December 13?
In the matter of number 818, map of Laura Park, I move that we recess the public hearing to the December 13, 2017 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And on the resolution? We have the same motion, same second. All those in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Lisetta Street, a 288 application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Zolo. This should be put over, we're, I was just given a copy of a survey last week by the neighbors, and we're going to work on the road of the abandonment, so with the board's permission, we are, that one is going to be resolved, hopefully, but it's, it's the process of the abandonment, so if you just could put this over to a January date, if that's possible?
Okay. We have a January date?
Yeah. Do you, I think it was the, do you have it written down?
I can give you a date. Yes. It would be January 10.
January 10. Thank you very much.
Okay. Motion to, we have a public hearing on this, recessed public hearing to January 10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Matter is recessed until January 10. Next item on the agenda is Gyrodyne. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll leave. Oh, I'm sorry, Ellie.
Where, did you teach us a gyrodisic?
Okay, we have map of Open Meadow, which is next on the agenda, and it's been requested by council to recess and table.
Yep.
We have motion to recess, Open Meadow.
In the matter of 1156, Open Meadow, I move that we recess the public hearing.
Till the 10th, 13th?
Until January 10th, 2018.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Matter is recessed until January 10th. Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is a pre, the application for, limit every subdivision for Gyrodyne in St. James.
The Smithtown Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on November 15th, 2017, to consider the above referenced application to subdivide a roughly 75-acre site into seven light industrial building lots, a 2.1-acre parking area and 24 acres of common area that will include a sewage treatment plant, internal roadways, and a pond. The preliminary map of Number 1178, map of Gyrodyne LLC, is comprised of five tax lots, it has frontage on New York State Route 25A and Mills Pond Road, and is bordered on the south by the Port Jefferson branch of the Long Island Railroad. The site is split-zoned L.I. and R43. Majority of the site, 65.4 acres, is zoned light industrial, approximately 9.6 acres along Mills Pond Road and New York State Route 25A is zoned R43, which is one acre per dwelling. The property is located at the northeast corner of the town, the village of Head of the Harbor is immediately north of the site, and the town of Brookhaven boundary is immediately east of the site. Approximately .05 acres of the property is in the town of Brookhaven, however, that part is not included in the subdivision layout. Land use around the property varies. North of the site, there is a farm, low-density residential neighborhood and a church. West of the site is low-density residential development. South of the site is the SUNY Stony Brook Small Business Development Center and a low-density residential development. East of the site is the SUNY Stony Brook Research Development Park. The site has several existing buildings with a variety of light industrial tenants and a catering hall. These will remain and will be located on lots 1 and 2 respectively. Lot 3 is proposed to be used as a land bank parking to serve as potential overflow parking from Lot 1. Lots 4 through 8 will be developed with light industrial uses. Conceptually, the applicant has indicated a number of uses that may locate on these lots, including a hotel, office buildings, and assisted living facilities. However, these lots could be used for other light industrial land uses. If the subdivision is approved, all uses on the site would be subject to site plan approval, and at least two of the potential uses would require special exception approval from the town board. The internal roadways will be privately owned and maintained, they will have a right-of-way width of 60 feet and a pavement width of 30 feet, the roads will be uncurbed with drainage swales on the sides of the road to channel storm water, to recharge basins, and act as an overflow. The applicant proposes to use the existing access from Mills Pond Road to create an access on New York State Route 25A, and to reopen the access easement across the Long Island Railroad tracks. The existing access on New York State Route 25A located on the east side of the property near the town border will be repurposed for the sewage treatment plant and emergency access only. Pursuant to Section 239 N of general municipal law, the subdivision was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because it was within 500 feet of an adjoining village and municipality and a state road. The Suffolk County Planning Commission approved this subdivision at their meeting on August 2nd, 2017, subject to 13 comments. Pursuant to Section 239 N, N of general municipal law, the clerks of the village of Head of the Harbor and the town of Brookhaven were notified by mail of this public hearing. In addition, per the town of Brookhaven's request, the town of Brookhaven Supervisor and the Brookhaven Planning Department were directly notified of this hearing. The Highway Department has reviewed the subdivision and has found it acceptable. The Traffic Safety Department recently received the traffic impact study prepared by Cameron Engineering, but has not yet had the opportunity to review it. The Engineering Department has reviewed the subdivision and finds the general layout acceptable, however, they require additional plans to be submitted for review before any formal decision is made. The Department of Environment and Waterways is reviewing the proposal, and is asked to review public input received at the public hearing before issuing a secret recommendation. The Planning Department has reviewed the subdivision and offers the following comments. Number one, the proposal substantially complies with our department's comments expressed in our letter dated July 27th, 2017. Two, the Planning Department has not yet had an opportunity to review the traffic impact study, and therefore cannot yet comment on the potential impact the proposal will have on Mills Pond Road, 25A, or Stony Brook Road. Three, the proposal generally complies with the St. James conceptual plan found in the town of Smithtown draft comprehensive plan update because, A, it provides a buffer plant, a buffer along New York State Route 25A. The draft St. James conceptual plan calls for a 300-foot buffer, and the applicant is proposing a 200-to-300-foot buffer along New York State Route 25A. B, protects and preserves the scenic corridors along New York State Route 25A and Mills Pond Road. The applicant has stated they are in support of the Planning Department's recommendation to not install curbs along Mills Pond Road to keep the historic and rural character. C, preserves property as open space. The draft St. James conceptual plan recommends preserving 50% of the property. The applicant is proposing to maintain approximately 14.5 acres as open space. In addition, there are approximately six acres of undeveloped land surrounding the catering hall, and significant landscaping on lots 4 and 5. Number four, the proposal appears to be consistent with two of the three recommendations the Planning Board gave to the town board on September 21st, 2016 regarding the draft comprehensive plan update, and that it, A, has the potential to support Stony Brook University, a major economic engine in the region; B, provides a large 200-to-300-foot buffer along New York State Route 25A to maintain the natural and historic corridors. The Planning Department recommends the Planning Board give the applicant and the public the opportunity to provide input on the proposal, and then recess the hearing until all departments have had an opportunity to review the traffic impact study, and the Department of Environment and Waterways has prepared a secret recommendation.
Good evening, my name is Richard Smith, I reside at 111 Boney Lane in St. James. I'm a 15-year member of the Board of Directors of Gyrodyne, and I'm going to open our presentation, and then ask Kevin McAndrews from Cameron Engineering to present all their good work. I want to first thank Dave Flynn and his entire team at the Planning Department for the town of Smithtown. Our board and our management have been working on this plan in excess of two and a half years, in consultation with our planning department here in town, have gotten a lot of good, useful suggestions and advice, and we've incorporated them within the plan. As mentioned in the reading of the memo to the Planning Board, there is significant open space being incorporated into this overall plan, encompasses 75 acres, of which just about 30% is going to be preserved for all time as open space. That includes preserving and maintaining the historic corridor along New York State Route 25A. As you're aware, there's a 200-foot setback running the full width of the property as it fronts on Route 25A, plus common areas in the interior. So if we looked at, as bright, and this is a subdivision application, under current and present zoning, we're not requiring any, or asking for any variance. It's far less intensive development than if an outside group of folks came in and wanted to maximize their yield on this property. So the preservation, I think, is going to be very helpful for the overall St. James community. And as previously noted, this plan, for the most part, is very much in sync and compliance with the town's draft comprehensive plan for the St. James community that I think was developed somewhere last autumn, autumn of 2016. The second point I'd like to address is environmental concerns. As you're probably aware, the numerous industrial tenants in the industrial buildings on the south end of this property lack sewage. It's all cesspools, it's all sanitary pools and all. This plan incorporates a self-contained, underground, fully serviced sewage treatment plant that will not only handle the needs of any buildings that are going to be built on any of the lots that are being proposed, but as, and probably even more critically, the existing tenants and the industrial park will tie into that, which is going to result in a significant reduction of nitrogen getting into the groundwater, getting into the local waterways, eventually finding its way into Stony Brook Harbor and all. So from an environmental perspective for the community, I view this as a benefit. As previously noted in the memo, the economic considerations, particularly for the St. James community, as we see the growing need for space for Stony Brook University, they have actually become our largest tenant in the leased space in the Gyrodyne Industrial Park with ever-growing need for office space. So this eventual build-out on this property, I think, is going to add to a tremendous increase in the commercial tax base for this town and for the St. James community, as each of us as homeowners bear an ever-growing share of the tax base. I think it might be a good idea to look at, what can the commercial base pick up? I think this plan offers an opportunity to increase the commercial tax base here in the town of Smithtown to everyone's benefit. School district, town government, county government, local fire district will all reap economic benefit from this. That doesn't even include the many people who will find gainful employment on this property. I think this is a wise use of this, of this property. The last point that I really want to talk about, I guess, is sort of what I'll call local stewardship. We have, half of our board have served on this company's board for a long, long time, all local residents. Our chair, Paul Lamb, Dr. Philip Palmetto, who's a longtime resident of Head of the Harbor, practically a lifetime resident here of Smithtown, growing up in this quag in St. James. We have a personal stake in this, this is our community also. Paul Lamb grew up right across the street on Shep Jones Lane, played in these fields as a boy with Dimitri Papadakis, the son of the founder of Gyrodyne. He knows these fields probably better than anyone. These fields were once owned by my great-grandfather, Debois Smith, who owned and lived in Mills Pond House. And my family cares very deeply for this area, which led my father and his two brothers to donate the Mills Pond House and eight acres surrounding it to the town of Smithtown in 1977 for use of the Smithtown Performing Arts, the stack building. We're not looking to maximize yield here, we're looking to strike that right balance between economic development, which I think we all know the St. James community desperately needs, and to preserve and enhance the environment, which we all love. I think this plan that we put forth achieves that critical balance. And I think, I just want to close by thanking Dave and his team again for all their good insight over the last two and a half years, as we've tried to fine-tune this, so this plan ends up being a benefit for all of us here in the town of Smithtown. I'm going to ask Kevin McAndrews, who's our engineer with Cameron Engineering, to come up and lead on with the presentation. Thank you all for your time.
Good evening, Chairman Chase, fellow board members. Kevin McAndrew, Cameron Engineering, 177 Crossways Park Drive, Woodbury, New York. Cameron Engineering, engineers, planners, and landscape architects for Gyrodyne LLC. My role in Cameron Engineering, I'm a partner in charge of civil engineering, planning, and landscape architecture. I'd like to also take a moment to introduce the other representatives of Cameron Engineering here this evening. John Cameron, Matt Partner and Founder of Cameron Engineering. Janice DeGina, Partner in Charge of Planning, Transportation, and Traffic Engineering. Mark Wagner, Partner in Charge of Water and Water Supply Engineering. Richard Suppley, Civil Engineering. And Rebecca Goldberg, Senior Traffic Engineer. We've put together a PowerPoint presentation, it's comprised of a presentation that I'll take you through, focuses on two main areas. First, the approach and formulation of the development plan for the 75-acre property, and then I'll transition into a series of slides that take you through in more detail, the subdivision layout, and the associated infrastructure. The Gyrodyne Board and Gyrodyne Executive Team charged Cameron Engineering with a clear A mandate to formulate a development plan that responds to the opportunities in delivering transformative benefits through the implementation of a smart, responsible, and sustainable development plan. A development plan that is sensitive to the distinctive attributes of the Flowerfield property, a development plan that is sensitive to the historical context of St. James, Head of the Harbor, and the Stony Brook community. When you think about the Flowerfield property, it has a diverse landscape, ecological systems, there's a half a mile of road frontage on historic corridor of 25A. Richard Smith referenced that historic corridor, the Washington Spy Trail, the rural roadscape of both 25A and Mills Pond Road, the origins of the Flowerfield property, the horticultural heritage, Gyrodyne's history, and the ability to be responsive to the region's needs and the region's economic engine, that being Stony Brook University and Stony Brook Medical. All great stuff to work with, and importantly, as Richard Smith had pointed out, all of these key development drivers that have guided the formulation of this plan were recommendations from this planning board to the town board regarding the town's draft comprehensive plan update as it was presented. When formulating a development, development plan for a property on the scale of Gyrodyne, the size, 75 acres, is there the potential to introduce adverse impacts? The answer is yes. But this is where Gyrodyne distinguishes themselves. As Mr. Smith and Richard pointed out, this is not a maximum intensity or density plan. Cameron Engineering has been working with Gyrodyne for over 20 years. We've worked on countless alternative land use plans and studies, many of those plans being substantially greater in both land use intensity as well as a physical build-out. In a similar manner, this is far from a maximum subdivision yield layout. This is a 75-acre property, there's eight development lots on this property, that averages out to over nine acres per lot. The majority of this property is light industrial zone, two acre. There could be many, many more lots, probably two to three times created on this property, with the uncertainty of what could be proposed under the light industrial zone on these properties. The Flower, the Flowerfield Plan is a sustainable mixed-use plan formulated around the three pillars of sustainability. Economic sustainability, that being tax revenue infusion, creation of high-quality jobs, and the annual re-earning economic output. Social sustainability, arts and culture, healthy living, wellness, and public accessibility to the property. And environmental sustainability, green infrastructure, low-impact development design, open space preservation, and recharge, and groundwater recharge management. Speaking further to economic sustainability- Speaking further to economic sustainability, one of the keys to economic sustainability is having land uses complementary to one another, and also land uses that are responsive to the community and the region's needs. The proposed land uses are complementary to the land uses that exist on the property today. You have the hospitality and catering use of Flowerfield celebrations. You have approximately 110,000 square feet today of occupied permitted light industrial uses. But those light industrial uses include, as Richard Smith had pointed out, Stony Brook University office space. It includes the atelier arts. It includes other light industrial uses, a whole host of uses, again, that are complementary to the proposed medical office, hotel, and assisted living. These proposed uses are also importantly complementary and responsive to the needs of the region's economic engine, Stony Brook University, and Stony Brook Medical. An integral piece to the formulation of this plan, after identifying the complementary uses, was to have those uses validated as there being a need for these uses. Gyrodyne retained HRNA. HRNA is a nationally recognized development consultant, market, and economic and fiscal impact firm. The results of the HRNA study strongly validated the proposed uses and their complementary benefits with a robust demand for hotel use with flexible meeting space, the demand for assisted living fueled by the growth of 75-plus population within the St. James and Stony Brook area. And with the consideration of Stony Brook Medical proposing to expand their facilities two times the size of what is there today by 2020, will fuel the need for Class A medical office space and office space, which is exactly what this plan is responding to. Building off the market study prepared by HRNA was a economic and fiscal impact study prepared by HRNA. Just to share with you just two indicators of the magnitude and the compelling nature of the economic benefits. At full build-out, as this plan is presently proposed, this plan would generate over $3.5 million in net new annual property taxes. At full build-out, the proposed project is estimated to generate approximately $90 million in direct economic output on an annual basis, and approximately 900 high-quality jobs produced by this proposed development. One of the other considerations when we take into account all of economic sustainability is schools. The proposed uses will result in no increase to school enrollment with significant tax benefit to the local school Whether you arrive at the Flowerfield campus by bike, walking, or by car, you'll be greeted by a park-like setting with this proposed campus plan. Arts and culture, healthy living, and wellness themes are integrated in the property landscape and operations. Within the plan that is being brought forth through the town, there will be two miles of walking trails and nature trails that are designed and interwoven within the expansive open space that will be preserved on this property. The open space areas, including the walking trails and the nature trail that will meander around the existing pond, will be open to the public, public accessibility. Dedicated bike lanes are proposed on the internal campus roads with direct connectivity to the bike route on 25A, as well as direct connectivity to Mills Pond Road. The existing atelier program, a thriving arts community, offers art classes that are fully enrolled and attended by many Smithtown and Stony Brook residents. The layout, density, and design elements of the campus are guided by environmental sustainability principles. Low-impact development. Low-impact development is about compact footprint, reduced development footprint, and managing storm water management in an ecologically-based manner. Storm water management here is not going to have pipes and sumps, which I heard the reference to recharge basins. That is not the approach. I'll talk to this a little bit more here. This is a plan where storm water management is integrated with the landscape on this distinctive property. Historic character preservation and open space preservation. The proposed campus plan will provide for over 23 acres of open space. As Richard Smith referenced, approximately 30% of the 75 acres. This includes preserving the character of the rural roadscape, preserving mature evergreens, the dense understory vegetation along the 2,700 linear feet of 25A, as well as the 1,700 linear feet of Mills Pond Road. As was mentioned in opening remarks, there is a 300-foot landscape buffer along 25A for approximately 1,000 linear feet, and the remainder being a 200-foot buffer. Within the campus property itself, hundreds of mature evergreens, hedge rows will be preserved. In combination, over 20 acres of combined successional field, meadow, and freshwater pond will remain on this campus property. Proposed landscaping will utilize a palette of indigenous trees, shrubs, and ground cover to strategically augment the existing buffers along both 25A and Mills Pond Road to create an enhanced campus character along these interior roadways, as well as the campus entranceways. Groundwater recharge for both storm water and wastewater is a major focus of the proposed green infrastructure design. I mentioned the approach with storm water management utilizing roadside vegetated swales. Some of those images are shown here on the slides before you. Where there are catch basins and limited hard infrastructure, the plan will also introduce best management practices such as catch basin inserts and filtration. Advanced wastewater treatment will reduce nitrogen concentration of treated wastewater by 80% to 90% compared to traditional septic systems, as was also mentioned by Richard Smith. I'll address this in a little bit greater detail when I get into the next series of slides on the specific subdivision In summary, there's really two key development drivers that have guided the overall approach to the formulation of this mixed-use plan. The first being a complementary land use mix and density, which leverages beneficial synergies and also minimizes potential adverse impacts, specifically traffic and community character. The second driver of this plan is the plan, again, not being a maximum intensity build-out, as well as not a maximum subdivision yield. Again, this is where Gyrodyne has come forth with an innovative and progressive approach to this application. The development approach for the Flowerfield campus proposes what is referred to as defined development thresholds associated with trip generation, wastewater, and associated infrastructure. The development thresholds are directly correlated to preserving community character, the extent of off-site traffic mitigation while balancing economic sustainability, social sustainability, and environmental sustainability. The means to implementing this sustainable mixed-use campus plan is through land subdivision. That's why we're here before the board this evening, to advance this subdivision application. Subdivision provides the ability and flexibility for this project to be built out by Gyrodyne, by a master developer, by development partners, or in phases. The subdivision consists of eight development parcels. I'll clarify that one of those eight parcels, as was referenced in the opening statement, is actually a land-banked parcel to support future development on Parcel 1. The ninth parcel is comprised of open space, the campus roads, as well as the wastewater infrastructure, all privately owned and maintained with no additional on-town services. Parcels 1 and 2, which are highlighted in the tan and brown to the left of the screen or the southerly side of the property, are the existing land uses on the property. Parcel 1 is 12.75 acres. This is the existing light industrial buildings on the property. Again, approximately 110,000 square feet of permitted light industrial use is occupied. Parcel 2, just above that, is the catering operation, Flowerfield Celebrations, comprised of 12.94 acres. Parcel 3, which is immediately to the right of Gyrodyne's existing buildings, is a little bit over two acres. And that property is there as land-banked. It'll be open space. It's there as land-banked. In the event that there is a rebuild of the buildings on Parcel 1, or there is an expansion, or increase in the square footage on Parcel 1, that property has the ability to provide the necessary parking to support that increase or expansion of those buildings. Parcel 4 is the proposed hotel that is directly adjacent to the catering operation. The logic there with the direct nexus between the hotel and the catering operations, that parcel is sized at slightly over six acres, 6.03. The central portion of the property, there's four lots, two in sort of the olive green, and then two to the right of that in the blue, Parcels 4 and 5, excuse me, Parcels 5 and 6. This is where the proposed medical office is envisioned. One parcel, Parcel 5, is 4.95 acres. Parcel 6, 5.98 acres. The two parcels in blue, 7 and 8, 3.1 acres and 3.06 acres respectively, are proposed for assisted living use. And Parcel 9, which is shaded in green, again, is the common area parcel consisting of 24 acres. I think it's also noteworthy, as was clarified in the opening announcement of this application, is that this is an application for subdivision. And the specifics as to exactly where buildings are sited on these lots, the height of the buildings, the architectural details, site lighting, landscaping, will all be subject to a site plan application and public hearing. I've outlined some of the smart infrastructure approach, but drilling down into a little bit what is within this subdivision plan from low-impact, development design, green infrastructure, complete streets, advanced wastewater design. Let me run you through a few of the key details here. The internal roads of the campus, as I pointed out, will be 30 feet in width. There'll be dedicated bike lanes on both sides of that. Directly off of the roadway will be bio swales or vegetated swales that importantly provide filtration of storm water and convey the storm water runoff to naturalized drainage areas. We are not proposing sumps or recharge basins on this property. The naturalized drainage areas, I'm pointing to the illustration here on the slide, ultimately are integrated in a seamless manner with the existing successional fields and meadow areas that are part of the expansive open space of this property. Traffic mitigation and advanced wastewater management I'll address on the following two slides. The subdivision's focus on smart infrastructure and environmental sustainability is exemplified in Gyrodyne's commitment to advanced wastewater management. A fully-enclosed advanced wastewater plant housed in a residential-scale detailed building, there's two examples of those buildings on the slide, will reduce nitrogen concentration of treated wastewater by 80% to 90% compared to the traditional onsite septic systems that serve the existing buildings and are traditionally proposed for developments of this magnitude. Advanced wastewater management will also reduce the total pounds of nitrogen discharged to groundwater by 70% of what a full as-of-right build-out of the site would produce. Addressing traffic management and mitigation, one of the important benefits of the mixed-use campus is the inherent mitigation realized in offset land uses, land uses with varying degrees of intensities, and land uses with strong connectivity, all which contribute to reducing trips. A comprehensive traffic impact study has been prepared and recently filed with both the town and New York State Department of Transportation. The traffic impact study evaluates the proposed mixed-use campus, a number of alternative land uses, and a comparative analysis of the potential impact of each of these alternates compared to the base mixed-use plan on the surrounding road network. Just one indicator on this slide that compares the difference between a mixed-use campus approach and a single-use is illustrated in the bar graph on the slide. What this chart illustrates is a significant number of additional trips that are associated with the single land use, such as medical office, compared to the mixed use of what is proposed on the campus. In the AM peak hour, there's approximately 15% more trips generated from a straight medical office compared to mixed use. In the PM peak hour, there's approximately 30% more trips generated by a single land use, such as medical office, compared to what the mixed-use approach is. With that being said, the concern of traffic impact is completely understood. The traffic impact study has confirmed why the concern is valid. 16 intersections were studied as part of this comprehensive traffic impact study. A number of the intersections of the 16 that were studied today have poor or failing conditions. The development approach that has been formulated with a menu of traffic mitigation measures includes offsetting land uses and varying degrees of land use intensities, trip distribution and traffic dispersion, and off-site mitigation improvement at six of the 16 intersections that were studied. With Gyrodyne proposing defined maximum development threshold for proposed trip generations tied to the proposed off-site mitigation, this approach provides for results which are responsive to addressing existing conditions as well as accommodating the added trips associated with this proposed build. When we talk about traffic distribution and traffic dispersion, in the case of the Flowerfield property, the application is proposing a new site access in the midpoint of the property, as well as leaving the three driveways open, active driveways open on Mills Pond Road, and reopening the on-grade crossing between Flowerfield property and Stony Brook Research and Development Park. The reopening of this grade crossing in combination with the four other driveways will reduce trips. Specifically reopening the on-grade crossing between Flowerfield and the SUNY Research Park will provide for not having cars leave this property. With the synergies of uses between these, cars will be facilitated to go across and not have to go out onto 25A. Cars will be facilitated to go across and not have to go out onto 25A or back around to Stony Brook Road. In a similar manner, there will be great synergies between what is developed on this property and Stony Brook University. And rather than cars needing to go out onto 25A, go down to Stony Brook Road by reopening that grade crossing and utilizing what's referred to as development drive, that is in the middle of the research park, that was one of the original Gyrodyne driveways, that will provide for vehicles to drive through the research park and come out on Stony Brook Road in direct proximity to entering into this, in direct proximity to entering into the SUNY campus. I had mentioned that 16 intersections were studied and modeled as part of the traffic impact study, with mitigation proposed at six intersections, including four along Stony Brook Road. The intersections of Mills Pond Road 25A and Stony Brook 25A being the most directly impacted by any development on the Flowerfield campus. As part of our coordination efforts, which is meeting with all regulatory agencies, representatives of Cameron Engineering recently met with New York State Department of Transportation. That meeting with DOT yielded a very important update. New York State DOT, over the past couple of years, has been studying and is advancing the design of a roundabout at the intersection of 25A and Stony Brook Road. The roundabout would eliminate the need for a traffic signal and also eliminate the need to address a number of realignment issues at that intersection. New York State DOT shared with Cameron Engineering, and I specifically asked if this could be communicated to this board.
Excuse me. Please give the speaker your attention in a proper manner. Everyone here will have the opportunity to be heard, and you will get the same respect that the speaker should have. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this meeting, I specifically asked New York State DOT representatives if we could communicate this update at this public hearing. They agreed to that. They said, "No problem." DOT has actually recently shared this update of advancing this design initiative of a roundabout with elected officials. So this is out there. This is now a design that is being advanced by New York State DOT. The proposed mitigation outlined in the traffic impact study for Mills Pond Road calls for new signalization and dedicated turn lanes at Mills Pond Road and 25A. With regard to the Stony Brook 25A intersection, I just outlined the update that we received from New York State DOT. If that initiative is not carried forward, our traffic impact study also proposes an alternative of signalization at Stony Brook Road and 25A with a realignment of the existing intersection to address both traffic efficiency and a number of safety issues that need to be addressed at that intersection. The traffic mitigation approach with a defined threshold on trip generation, combined with the defined off-site mitigation, will deliver the needed improvements while maintaining, at these six intersections, while maintaining the community character of the surrounding road network. One of the important considerations when we looked at the density and intensity of this development, we recognized that there would be the need for traffic mitigation, but we looked at bringing that density to a point where mitigation could be implemented without property takings and without having significant improvements that would change the historic character of the, of both the corridor of 25A, Stony Brook Road, as well as Mills Pond Road. And that is the level of how this development has been formulated. All of the mixed-use campus benefits that have been outlined in our presentation to you this evening and the subdivision layout and infrastructure components will be comprehensively detailed in an environmental impact statement. The EIS is actually in progress now. It will be filed with the town upon the town advancing the next seeker steps. We're optimistic that this will occur, and the filing of this impact statement will take place in early 2018. The preliminary subdivision map has been filed with the town. This includes more detailed engineering plans that speak to all of the smart infrastructure and green infrastructure that I've outlined tonight. Gyrodyne is committed to smart and responsible development with economic, social, and environmental sustainability. A development plan that complies with the St. James Conceptual Plan, contained within the town's draft comprehensive plan update, and with the planning board's recommendations to the town board, resulting in a sustainable plan for the community, the town, and the region. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions?
I just got one regarding Road C. Road C is the one that you're talking about opening up that's going to go back into the Stony Brook Campus? That's the one that's over by Long Island Railroad?
It is. This is, again, it's the common grade crossing.
And that's the backside of that new, I think it's in engineering or?
That grade crossing is right adjacent to the Flowerfield industrial buildings.
Okay.
And again, provides a direct connection, was always part of the original Gyrodyne property, provides a direct connection in what now, today, Stony Brook calls development drive. And that development drive takes you out adjacent to Seawit, right out to Stony Brook Road.
And the other roads off of Mills Pond Road, the existing ones are going to stay, and then you're going to add another?
Correct. The driveways on Mill Pond Road will remain active, and we're proposing a right-in, right-out site access in the midpoint of the property, just southeast of where Shep Jones Lane is.
And the only light you're going to have is the intersection of Mills Pond and 25, there's no light on Mills Pond itself.
Signalization we're proposing is at Mill Pond and 25A, subject to DOT advancing the roundabout. That would address the, and obviate a traffic signal. If DOT does not advance that initiative of roundabout, we've identified a traffic signal and a realignment at that intersection of 25A and Stony Brook Road.
Your proposal, it mentioned calls for the building of assisted living buildings, medical office buildings, and a hotel?
Yes.
How many stories are proposed for each of those types of buildings?
Three stories.
Three stories each?
Yes. Part of the proposal, and consistent with low-impact design, is by going to a third story, it reduces the overall development footprint, and this is one of the benefits of that.
Any other questions or comments before we invite the public to speak?
How many acres altogether are not, including buffers that are being maintained are not going to be developed out of the 75 acres?
There's, I represented that there's 23 acres that will be provided as open space. That's a combination of the buffer areas along, let me just point to this, that's a combination of the buffer areas along 25A. It does not include any of the acreage that's part of the wastewater treatment facility. It includes the acreage of the pond and the surrounding green space. It also includes acreage that is part of Lot One, which will not be developed, which is a large area closest to Mills Pond Road. And it also includes the regulated freshwater wetland area around the pond on the catering lot.
And the waste treatment, you said that was below grade?
Yes, it's a fully enclosed building where all of the process and infrastructure is contained in that building. And then there are leaching pools that are, of course, subsurface, that are below the meadow area that are part of the buffer.
And that treatment facility, that's only for this piece of property, or would anything else be tapped into that?
It's designed for this full buildout.
How many square feet is that building supposed to be, the treatment building?
I'm going to defer to Mark Wagner on that.
The total acreage with the buffers for Suffolk County.
He needs to come to the mic.
He's asking about this square footage of the building.
Please come forward, give your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Good evening. Mark Wagner, Cameron Engineering, 177 Crossways Park Drive, Woodbury. The acreage for the sewage treatment plan is approximately four acres. The building would be along the lines of about 1,500 square feet, single story.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, I will ask members of the public who are present if they wish to share their remarks with us. To do so, it's normally customary if the presenters would like to avail themselves afterwards to answer any questions or have any additional comments, you may do so. So may the first person who wishes to come forward, those gentlemen standing closest, please give your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Engelbreit. I live at 34 Lake Street in Sotoket. I'm the New York State Assembly Member who represents the 4th District, which includes Stony Brook Road. I'm also the Chair of the Assembly Standing Committee of Environmental Conservation and the only elected natural scientist in the legislature. I appear before you to offer my perspective in opposition to the proposed development that's now before you. I believe it would result in the extreme overdevelopment of the historic Flowerfield Although I'm a neighbor, I have a historic relationship with St. James. When my colleague, Mike DeAndre, was still alive, we worked together, for example, to acquire the St. James General Store. We worked together to acquire, as parkland in addition, the Historic Deep Wells Historic Farm and other initiatives, but those are near this site. They're part of the historic corridor that's been referred to a few times. That historic corridor, both of those properties, by the way, are on the National Register of Historic Sites. And just on the Brookhaven side is the William Sidney Mount House at the corner of Route 25A and Stony Brook Road. That's also on the National Register of Historic Places. So we're talking about a corridor that is lined with already designated National Register sites. The BB&amp;GG Farm was significant enough that during that same era, when Mike and I were working together, it was acquired, the development rights were acquired in order to help protect the common harbor of Stony Brook Harbor that both of our communities share. And our communities go back quite a ways. I'm from Sotoket, just a block from where I live is where Richard Bull Smith lived before he saw the refuge in Sotoket after he was persecuted on the East End. And that was, it was from Sotoket that he came to Smithtown, to found your town. So our communities have a long history of cooperation. I hope we can continue that tradition. I hope we don't end up setting up cannons on the border, but I want to tell you, there's some real upset people on Stony Brook Road. Let me give you a perspective of the meeting that we recently had with the Regional Director and his top staff of the DOT. We met specifically to talk about Stony Brook Road, and contrary to what you just heard, there was no mention at all about a roundabout that would involve that corner that was referred to as if this was already somehow a done deal. I'm the senior elected official, along with my colleague who was elected on the same day I was, the supervisor of the Town of Brookhaven. Neither of our offices were informed about what took place recently with the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and that's a travesty. In the same timeframe that I was organizing a meeting with the Regional Director, Mr. Brown of the DOT, apparently this proposal was being quietly advanced, and neither head of the harbor, nor Brookhaven Town, nor senior elected officials were even notified that this was getting ready to come out for discussion. Now, I don't, I don't think that that bodes well at all, and it is most unfortunate. Let me be clear. I teach sustainability studies for the Sustainability Department on the campus, Sustainability Studies Department. I teach natural resources sustainability. That's an upper-division course. What you heard about sustainability does not match reality. Sustainability means that you, especially with natural resources, that the air, land, and water resources from any use of those resources is replenishable and does not have any chance of undergoing progressive deterioration over time. That is not the case of what we see here. Let's just take the traffic and its impact on air. We're talking about, we're talking about taking a beautiful community on both sides of the border and bringing midtown Manhattan-type traffic into that community. Both of these roads, that's why we met with the Regional Director recently, both of these roads, the state road and the town road, town road being Stony Brook Road, the state road being 25A, are already almost at 50 percent over capacity right now. You're going to have traffic jams, and those traffic jams are going to have internal combustion engines, we call them our car motors, completely fouling the air. It doesn't stay in the air, it comes down washing with rain and into the ground. And not far away is another major state asset. Of all of the harbors of the north shore of Long Island, there's only one harbor that the state of New York owns the bottom of, and it's Stony Brook Harbor. The state owns over 900 acres in the bottom of Stony Brook Harbor. That's what Mike DeAndre and myself and my other colleagues over time have been working to try to protect. That harbor is remarkable. That's why you have Avalon Preserve. It was myself who recommended to the Nature Conservancy that they acquire Avalon. Instead, they recommended to the Simons Foundation that they could do the same thing. And to our eternal gratitude, Jim Simons memorialized his son by acquiring the Avalon Preserve. There's also, that's in the immediate watershed of the harbor. There's also the Nature Conservancy Preserve on Shep Jones Lane. That goes way back in time. It's one of the first preserves after Robert Cushman Murphy, the curator emeritus of Oceanic Birds at the American Museum of Natural History, recommended that that property be preserved. So you add that together with the BB&amp;GG, there's a green belt. What we see here is not consistent, it's separated only by the paved road, is not consistent with that vision of protection for the harbor. It is not consistent with the protection of the quality of life of the people of St. James. It's not consistent with the vision of the quality of life of the people of Stony Brook. It's not consistent with the vision of the quality of life of the people of Stony Brook.[598.82][598.82][applause] I would like to recommend a couple of recommendations. A true sustainable vision for the St. James community and the Stony Brook community should be worked on together. It shouldn't be that my friend Ed Romaine learns about this two days before a vote. Or was it two days after the vote? It was actually after the vote he learns about it. That's not a way to move toward a responsible plan that allows for Natural Resources to remain inviolate and replenishable going forward. Talking about a roundabout for a National Register property is just a complete outrage. It's not just on that corner that we have the William Sidney Mount House adjacent to it, and part of it is a state park. Most people don't know that. But the former block property was acquired with an Assembly Grant and is in the state park system. Again, part of the drainage of the harbor, part of what we've been working to try to protect and preserve. This is complex stuff. I would recommend that you reject this proposal. I would recommend that you follow that rejection with a moratorium on not just this property, but all of the border properties. You've got similar antique zoning, enafteristic zoning on the Huntington border as well. And I urge you to reach across to the planning departments of Brookhaven and Huntington. I'm here to speak mostly for Brookhaven. Certainly, we have in Tulio Bertoli, a master planner in Brookhaven. I know that you have a tradition of excellent planning in Smithtown. Put the thought processes together during the moratorium. Work intermunicipally and come up with something that really is a true sustainable vision for our respective communities. And then implement it. It would result in getting rid of this antique zoning, I hope, but I don't know that for sure. We'll have to see what the planners come up with, working in a cooperative manner. I would respect the quality of the professionals of two or more towns working together. What we have now is not sustainable development. It will result in the progressive deterioration of the quality of life of our communities, the deterioration of the environment, the deterioration of the way in which the environment is able to be sustained in an ongoing way. I thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you.[807.16][807.16][applause] Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assemblyman Engelbreit.
Good evening. My name is Stan Lopucha of Seven Firewood Court, St. James.
Please spell your last name.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is Flowerfield.
Please, just please take the microphone if you're going to go up.
Yes. I go there every morning for a walk with my dog. His name is Harold. And I love it. I bought this property about, whoo, 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 25 years ago because of Flowerfield. Well, my dog now is only 13, but, well, there'll be another one. He's the guide dog, anyway. So during the presentations, we heard a number of, I say, misinterpretations. First of all, we see a wonderful plan with no wonderful pools. There is no pools. There is a pool that was not addressed. The Mills Pond Pond that overflows every single year. And then, what do we have? Mills Pond Road is blocked. That was not addressed. Where is that environment-friendly design? Well, Mr. Smith is not here, anyway, but Mr. Engineer now is here. And I'm sure that he will address that issue. Now, we're talking about the properties out here. Lots of environment-friendly, what was called, mitigation, cesspools. Well, where are the plans? No plans. We're talking about here. And this is where my Harold loves to pee. Come on board. Don't screw up our James, St. James property. This is the beautiful land, and we love it.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Please come forward, state your name for the record, after this lady.
Thank you. My name is Lee Karauer, K-R-A-U-E-R. I live at 33 Fraternity Lane in Stony Brook. And I am the Chairperson of the Friends of Stony Brook Road. Two things I want to say before I begin my prepared remarks. Anybody on this board who thinks they're going to get a dime out of Stony Brook University in property taxes, you better build another pipe dream. Because we live with the university. We get zero. That's what we get, zero.[1046.58][1046.58][applause] We couldn't even get them to commit to helping us with the traffic problem on Stony Brook Road because the answer we got is it's not our problem. Okay? That's the answer. The other thing that I would tell you is that if you're going to add 36,000 trips a month, that comes out to 1,900 cars a day. And I don't care how you disperse them, it's still 1,900 cars a day. I've worked for more than a year, year and a half, with the state, with the county, and with town officials to mitigate, to use your term, traffic on Stony Brook Road. All of these officials, Democrats, Republicans, they are all opposed to any additional projects on Stony Brook Road that will add any more traffic. We cannot take it. We cannot bear it. Stony Brook Road, as I'm sure you already know, is a two-lane, it's a very picturesque highway. It's the gateway to our community. My survey map for the home I live on says Flowerfield. That's where my home is built. It's built on Flowerfield. Okay? The road is, families live on the road. Children wait for buses on Stony Brook Road. Children walk to school on Stony Brook Road. The road is already over capacity, a status that has been acknowledged by every state and local official. Nobody denies that we are way beyond capacity. We're not 5% over. We're not 10% over. We're at at least 50% over capacity for that road. So if someone could tell me where all this traffic is going to be mitigated to, my answer is that they must be planning to build another lane over that lane. Because there's no other way you could go but up. Okay? What about the infrastructure costs to the Town of Brookhaven? These gentlemen come and they say there's not going to be infrastructure costs to the Town of Smithtown. I think that's wonderful. Don't believe it, but I think it's wonderful. This project will bring tremendous infrastructure cost to the Town of Brookhaven. Okay? I don't want to see anybody in St. James go through what we go through on Stony Brook Road. Please don't let them touch Mill Pond Road. It will be a disaster. Take a ride at any time of the day on Stony Brook Road, and that's what your Mill Pond Road is going to be like if you allow this to happen. There's only so many places cars can go. Any additional development will only serve to establish an already overused road as a disaster in the making. Nothing good could possibly come from this. The Suffolk County Planning Commission also, I went to the Planning Commission meeting, they seem not to know what the word "planning" in their title is. And I don't say that facetiously. Because when I directly asked the gentleman in charge whether or not their scope of responsibility included Stony Brook University, he thought I was nuts. Well, Stony Brook University has to be part of the planning process. They have no master plan. They're going to come in here, and these nice gentlemen can tell you, you're going to have office buildings, you're going to have doctors' offices, you're going to have this, you're going to have that. What you're going to have is Stony Brook University owning the mall. That's what you're going to have. Take a look at the shopping center on the quarter of Niskent Highway in Stony Brook Road. Those three buildings went up almost overnight. Nobody knew anything about them. One morning, they weren't there. The next morning, we know they're starting work on them. Nobody knew. That's what you're going to have. The Town of Brookhaven, as Steve clearly stated, received notice two days before the official hearing for the Suffolk County Planning Board. Two days. I mean, something is wrong with that picture. I'm respectfully asking that the Smithtown Town Board do everything it can to work with the county and with the state to preserve this beautiful, open space. I know for a fact, [applause] I can tell you here without a moment's hesitation that the people in this community will lay their bodies down on Stony Brook Road before there's another curb cut on it. That will not happen.[1323.48][1323.48][applause] And I have to question something, and, never mind, I'll raise it at another time. But I ask you to please, please consider what you're going to do to our community and what you're going to do to your community. Nobody's going to benefit from this except the people who own the Gyrodyne property. Believe me, St. James will not benefit. They will not.[1350.70][1350.70][applause]
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brenda Prushenowsky. I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Planning, Environmental Protection, Engineering, and Building for the Town of Brookhaven. And I've, P as in Peter, R-U-S-I-N-O-W-S-K-I. And I've been asked to read the following statement on behalf of Brookhaven Town Supervisor, Ed Romaine. The proposed Gyrodyne LLC subdivision is immediately adjacent to the border with the Town of Brookhaven. Gyrodyne envisions a $150 million development with assisted living, a hotel, and medical offices, according to the paperwork submitted by the applicants. The subdivision would be the largest in years and probably the last of its size in Smithtown, which is mostly built out. The tract would be divided into eight parcels. Much of the land is now zoned for light industry, but most of the 9.5-acre section zoned residential would remain as open space, according to preliminary plans submitted by the company. Incredibly, the Suffolk County Planning Commission approved Gyrodyne subdivision application on August 2nd, 2017, with little notice and incomplete information provided to the Town of Brookhaven. Furthermore, the Suffolk County Planning Commission didn't even recommend a traffic study be done to determine the impact that this large development would have on local roads. The Town of Brookhaven is opposed to any traffic created as a result of this proposed subdivision, emptying onto town roads and specifically Stony Brook Road. This road is overcrowded now, particularly because of usage from the university, and does not need additional traffic from a project outside of our town. That would also be true for New York State Route 25A, a two-lane highway that is currently beyond its carrying capacity. The Town of Brookhaven requests that the Smithtown Planning Board, in considering this subdivision, require an extensive traffic study to ensure that this proposed development does not seriously impact traffic flows on the adjoining roads, and in particular, Stony Brook Road. The Town of Brookhaven is adamantly opposed to any development plan that would create more traffic for Stony Brook Road, which is only one of two ways for accessing the State University at Stony Brook. Moreover, separate and apart from this development, the Town of Brookhaven is calling on the New York State Department of Transportation to undertake a master traffic plan for the area in and around State University of New York at Stony Brook. It is the town's contention that town, county, and state roads in the vicinity are already over capacity, and a master plan for the entire area as it relates to traffic flow is needed as soon as possible. Until such plan is forthcoming, I would urge the Smithtown Planning Board not to move forward with the Gyrodyne subdivision. Finally, the Town of Brookhaven strongly supports the efforts of Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit and County Legislator Kara Han to acquire some, if not all, of the Gyrodyne parcel for open space and park purposes. We believe development of the Gyrodyne parcel would significantly add traffic to New York State Route 25A and Stony Brook Road, both of which are already over capacity. We think preservation is the appropriate approach when it comes to the future of this park property. I have additional copies of this, if you'd like me to submit them.
Yes, please submit.[1566.48][1566.48][applause] Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lori Cassay. I live on Mills Pond Road in St. James.
Wait, what's my?
My husband and I were, became proud owners 35 years ago. We redeveloped a piece of property that we were told at one time was part of Flowerfield. Felt very proud of this, and again, have been living there for 35 years. Raised three children. Happy to say, none of them incurred anything substantial during their lives. Part of the reason is because they were never allowed to go down on Mills Pond Road. It was what it was as they were growing. But as they were growing, my husband and I certainly acknowledged the increase in traffic, it being a cut-through from 25A to Mariches Road to over to the mall. Again, it's always been what it's been. I anticipate grandchildren in my future, hopefully. That said, the area cannot handle any more traffic. I've listened to the developers. I, Mills Pond Road, I thank the gals that were ahead of me in discussing Stony Brook Road. I know Stony Brook Road can handle it. Mills Pond Road can't handle it more than they can. The area cannot handle 900 jobs is what this all anticipates building. Now, that's 900 more vehicles on these roads on a daily basis, and that's the jobs.[1697.88][1697.88][applause] That's not the people coming to visit, the people in assisted living or in the hospital. I, I don't know what else to say, but the area is not conducive to all the building. And I'm hoping, as a resident of St. James who loves being here, I'm hoping that you consider all of the information that they have brought to you tonight. I'm just a homeowner, a homemaker. I have nothing substantial to give you that they have given you. I really hope you're listening.[1736.24][1736.24][applause]
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Martin, on behalf of Councilwoman Valerie Cartwright, Town of Brookhaven, First Council District. Town Hall Address, 1 Independence Hill, Farmingville. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I'm here on behalf of Councilwoman Cartwright. The Councilwoman is deeply concerned about this proposal as presented. Council District 1 is comprised of several hamlets immediately east of Smithtown, including Stony Brook, Sutaket, Port Jefferson Station, Terryville, and the villages of Port Jefferson, Belter, Oldfield, and Poquap. The residents in Stony Brook and the immediately surrounding area would be significantly affected by the development of this proposed application. Assemblyman Engelbreit has already laid the historical foundation. Assemblyman Engelbreit has already laid the historical foundation. Our Deputy Commissioner of Planning also laid out numerous townwide concerns. So I will just reemphasize that traffic is of the utmost concern to residents and the adjacent municipalities. As you are aware, the town just completed a corridor study of Route 25A from the Smithtown line to the Poquit line. And among the many topics that were considered, traffic was a major and consistent concern. The expansion of the neighboring university, Stony Brook University, which is home to over 26,000 students, faculty, and staff, has significantly increased traffic volume over the past few decades. Additionally, as evidenced by our corridor study, the surrounding residents are staunchly opposed to road widening to reduce traffic congestion. And many feel that the growth of the university, although very positive in some ways, has also changed and shifted the rural character of the adjacent communities. So adding additional high-density traffic generating problems, or projects, excuse me, would increase the major changes to this community. We would like to echo the need for serious review of a comprehensive traffic study of the area before any development projects are approved. And we again reiterate the fact that the town of Brookhaven is staunchly opposed to any additional traffic exiting via Stony Brook Road or Route 25A. A potential alternative option in the form of legislation that was recently brought forward by legislators Hahn and Trotta has also been presented for this property. It could potentially be a benefit for both Smithtown as well as Brookhaven Town by allowing the town of, by allowing the county, rather, to purchase and preserve some or all of this area for use for the public. So we ask that the Planning Board deny this application and seriously consider alternative proposals, including open space preservation. And we thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight, and we ask that we work together in the spirit of municipal cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have time for one more speaker before we take a five-minute recess. Our technical support folks have to change the videotape, and our sonographer could certainly use that time off as well. So one more speaker before we recess.
Okay. My name is Cindy Smith, and yes, it's S-M-I-T-H, and yes, I am related, okay? I'm a former resident of the town of Smithtown for the last 45 years, before moving over the line just a tad over into the town of Smithtown, I'm sorry, into the town of Brookhaven. And I'm here on behalf of the Greater Stony Brook Action Coalition, which is a group of eight civic organizations representing 11,000 homes and 30,000 residents in the three-village area in the town of Brookhaven. Tonight, you'll hear a lot from other civics and elected officials, all of which have deep concerns about the traffic, safety, quality of life, and the burden this potential development would put on local residents. Suffolk County legislators Kara Hahn and Robert Trotta have introduced a bill for Suffolk County to purchase the parcel as open space. And Brookhaven Town Supervisor Ed Romaine supports the open space plans and goes one step further by calling on infrastructure review and development of an infrastructure master plan in this overburdened area. And our coalition agrees with all of these efforts. It's really a question of the roads. And the roads really are the ones that Bull Smith, my relative, George Washington, William Sidney Mount, Ward Melville, and John Lewis Childs, the founder of Flowerfield, saw, and they actually rode on. The roads and the surrounding land where they were very bucolic, and they still are, it's the land that brought so many of the residents into the area, and we'd like to really, really see it kept that way. Because we really feel it's in jeopardy. The plan, it's lovely in another world, but in reality, it's really not. This type of plan goes through, we really feel that our water stands to be polluted. Tens of thousands of car trips will pack our two-lane roads and smog our air. Our fire and safety department, and it's the one thing we really haven't spoken about, the fire and safety department of Stony Brook can't get up and down Stony Brook Road to start with. They sit with their sirens blaring, and they're sitting there waiting to answer calls, and they can't get down the road already. I don't want to be the person that's sitting there with the burning house, or the person who's having a heart attack on the floor because they're sitting in traffic. And that's what's already going on. That's why we've already made issues with our DOT and our town to see if we can do something about the traffic that already exists there. And we're really fearful that our landscape will be gone forever. And once that happens, there really is going to be no turning back. And we really know all of this, and, you know, I hate to say we know better, but we actually do know better, because many of us, day in, day out, live with what kind of development is already going on in that particular area. Many of us live off of Route 25A and live right off of Stony Brook Road, which is right by Stony Brook University, and the new wireless center, which is, as we know, the other part of the Gyrodyne slash Flowerfield property, where up to 10 additional multi-level buildings are being built. That's what we understand from the university. And nobody here is taking that into consideration. Nobody. You figure that if there are 100 people that are now working in a building, that's 4,000 additional car trips a month that are going on. And that doesn't include service people or any of those sorts of things. Nobody here, Suffolk County Planning Board didn't take that into consideration. And I'm sure the folks over at Gyrodyne, when they were planning, didn't take that into consideration as well. So while this university may be a great economic driver, it's also, in some ways, a really bad neighbor, because it can do anything it wants and put as much traffic anywhere it wants. At the end of the day, it's the residents who are the ones who shoulder the dangers and the reduced quality of life that this, quote, "economic boom of development" will actually produce. We applaud smart, scalable economic growth, but not if it comes on the backs of residents and the people who actually got us here in history. They were the ones who actually made the area one of the finest on Long Island and really want to keep it that way. We look forward to the Smithtown Planning Board to be stewards of this property and work with all parties to prize our natural resources, to enhance residential quality of life, and revel in the history that this parcel in the surrounding area holds as unique. And I'd like to echo the sentiments of Assemblyman Engelbreit and several of the other people that spoke. We need a coalition of municipalities to really look at these things, because we're all, we're just sitting on top of each other. And we really need to say, what is going on here, what is going on here, what is going on here? Everybody is so cylinder-like at this point, it's absolutely absurd. When you're 500 feet from me and you want to develop 124,000 square-foot medical office building, and nobody's talked to us about it, I think it's kind of absurd. So we'd like to see Smithtown and the other municipalities step up and work as a coalition together to come up with a master plan for these types of things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, by the clock, the time is 9:57. We will take a short break for 10 minutes and then resume hearing from the public on this. Thank you.